Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Dustin Hillis, Chair of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. Thank you for joining us for our meeting this afternoon. Been joined by my colleagues to my far right, our Vice Chair, Councilmember Amos, followed by Councilmember Boone, to my immediate right, or to my immediate left, Councilmember Norwood, followed by Councilmember Overstreet, followed by Councilmember Waits. And we do constitute a quorum. I will make a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed?
Six yeas, zero nays. Agenda is adopted. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed?
Six yeas, zero nays. Minutes are approved. Now, moving on to public comment. Our first speaker will be Ms. Henri Jordan.
Given out to the Spirit of God to everyone that's here. But those sins which proceed out of the mouth come forth from the heart, and they defile the man. Matthew 15, Chapter 18, verse. Evil thoughts are evil schemes. I heard that James Griffith said he really didn't care for me. He was just after the money. When you seek to kill me, James, you ask to be killed. The Lord said, James, have destroyed many souls. For whosoever shall call upon the name of the Lord shall be saved. Romans 10, Chapter 13, verse. If you don't call on Jesus to be saved, you are asking to go to hell, and your so-called righteousness is of the flesh. When you tell me to work your job, you seek to stop the gift of Jesus to operate. I don't control the gift; Jesus does. You are asking for death when you ask me to work your job. Therefore, does say the Lord, you have not hearkened unto me in proclaiming liberty everyone to his brother and every man to his neighbor. Behold, I became a liberty for you, says the Lord, to the sword, to the pestilence, and to the famine. And I will make you to be removed unto all the kingdoms of the earth. Jeremiah 34, Chapter 17, verse. Judgment cuts a man down to size and reminds him that his well-being really depends on God. When you desire bondage for me or anyone else, then bondage shall come upon you. Be strong and courageous; be not afraid or dismayed to the king of Assyria, nor for all the multitude that is with him. For there be more with us than with him. 2 Chronicles 32nd, Chapter 7, verse. Hesarch's preparation for an Assyrian attack against spiritual encouragement to the citizens of Jerusalem. My flesh, look how big the crowd that is fighting against me. But I need to crucify the flesh to see how long, how big Jesus is. Jesus is bigger than all of us, and we need His help. He don't need our help, but our flesh. And we want to own Jesus and tell Jesus what to do. That's a wrong, that's sin against God.
Next is Margie McLeod.
Good afternoon. I usually come on full counsel, but something is burning me. I'm talking about two subjects, the jail. The jail need to be a jail because it's overcrowded. We do not want this jail. I don't want this jail to be closed. Because you got to understand, when the inmates leave, because I do talk to inmates, they go to another county, and then they're on a work program. We need the jail to stay open. You got 800 buildings, let's use those buildings. You got one that is in East Point, but it's, no, College Park, it belonged to the city. So, let's use that. But then another one, I am, I'm not going to give you my age. This buyback program, stop it. That's old. Buyback a gun, you think the city of Atlanta going to be safe? No, it's not. Find out where they getting the gun. Put this money in the police budget. Put that money in the fire budget. Wasting my money? That's my tax dollar. We did that in the 60s. That's, I just came from New York. They don't even do that. Buyback. Who thought of that? How old you, Amos? They did that during your time, didn't it? Was it safe? You're going to put us in harm's way. Because what they going to do? You going to give me $50 for a gun? Boom, let me break into your car and get this gun. Because the city is a gangster. Because y'all paying people to get guns off the street, but you going to give me money? And you going to think this going to be safe? No, I'm not going to be safe. My community is not going to be safe. Find out who giving them guns. Put that money where it's supposed to be put in. You got homeless? Y'all waste. That's a waste. Whoever thought of that program? Ask what year was they born? Because in the 60s, that's what we did. New York don't do it no more. Other, don't. It don't work. Do y'all understand me? It don't work. Because somebody else's pocket going to get paid, and you going to take guns and give it to $50? Oh, everybody going to line up and buy better guns? What? The gun that I got for $10, you going to give me 50? And you going to give me 100? Put the money. Stop wasting money and getting new ideas. Because when I growing up, we didn't have technology. We changed. And you got to change for new ideas. And stop messing with my mic. Have a blessed day.
Next is DeJuan Robinson.
Afternoon, Counsel. Some of the issues we have in the city of Atlanta can really be fixed if we just use common sense. Judges hand out the bonds. The DA and all those play a part in the bonds. Sheriff Office is the last person that gets the inmate once they're sentenced. So, what are we fighting for? I mean, you know, you guys have the power to put in some legislation to send over there and make these judges move these cases. We got people over here at this man jail that's been there for two years waiting to go to court. Is that the sheriff's fault? The common sense. We all live in a city where we want safety first, Dustin Hillis. We want safety first. All the money should be given to these men in blue, man, the higher the best and the brightest. Why they got to come up here and fight for their money all the time with you guys? We want to be safe. That's common sense. A lot of the issues we can just fix, man, if we just use common sense and stop passing these foolish legislation and let's get to leadership. It's an easy fix. We want to be safe. We want to move people out of the jail. So, we talking about the data, that's the last. I mean, you know, move these judges to hear these cases. You got some judges hearing 30 cases a month, some hearing 150, 200. Move the judges to hear the cases. It's that simple. If you want the jails to stop being overcrowded, move the judges to hear these cases and get the people out of there. The sheriff does not set the bond. So, what are we still doing here talking about the same old stuff? We're all adults, and you guys are here because you supposed to know your assignment and doing your job. So, the sheriff is the last line of defense. The police make the arrests, the DA and the judges do it. When they let them go, it's not the police fault that you keep letting repeat offenders go. It's the judges and the DA over there. We got to move on them. We got to start having a conversation, asking them to walk from over there to over here, having those conversations. We keep having the same conversation about the jail. No one wants to be in jail for DUI, you know what I'm saying, any small offense, sitting next to someone who's a murderer, or a robber, or violent offense. That just doesn't make sense. It has never happened. It never will happen. And we got to just use common sense and stop coming in here doing the same old things. Safety first. All that play a major part. So, we just got to just use common sense, people, and just stop, let's just keep coming down here doing the same old stuff, letting the agitators come down here, and you scared of them because they either on one side of the LGBTB, and you be scared to go against it, and we just can't do that. Listen what I'm saying, listen, we can't tiptoe around certain things. We all are in the same fight, whether you straight LGBT or not. Everybody wants to be safe. Everybody want to be treated fairly. You know what I'm saying? So, that's all I'm saying. We all have friends that are on one side or another. I'm not against it, but what I'm saying is, stop being scared of one side just because we are scared that community have more power than the other. We got to do what's right all the time. Thank you.
Next is Tiffany Roberts.
Good afternoon. My name is Tiffany Roberts. I'm Public Policy Director of the Southern Center for Human Rights. I have here sources related to our public comment as an organization. As I mentioned, every time I'm here, Southern Center is a nonprofit law firm committed to decriminalizing race and poverty. We have been doing so for over four decades. We are here, of course, to ask for you to either hold or vote down the paper that would amend the ordinance authorizing the lease of jail beds to ACDC. And we are doing so for several reasons, but primarily because our, our look at what this process has looked like in previous terms suggests that far more due diligence was exercised on the part of the city prior to the lease of any jail beds to Fulton County. We, of course, litigate the issues around overcrowding, around people dying in Rice Street and any facility. We also know that Fulton County sends more people to Georgia prisons than any other county in the state, doing part to population, but also doing part to process. And many of the things that the gentleman before me asked you to evaluate with respect to judges and DAs, many of those things cannot be done without a review of data. We have been asking for data for a really long time. I think this morning, we finally made some headway when it comes to bond data. But in 2010, there was even a committee, the council authorized a committee, a negotiation team that was responsible for looking at finances, for looking at the services that would be provided. You received a fiscal analysis from Legal Action Center last week to suggest that this lease may very well cost the city much more than you anticipate. The IGA, I'll say it a million times, because sometimes a broken record, you could still remember the melody. The IGA does not define overcrowding. There are no safeguards in place to ensure that this is not merely Fulton County increasing its jail footprint. We, contrary to what might be suggested, are not agitators. Okay? I am a lawyer, a litigator, a policy expert. We were recently represented in Geneva at the United Nations Committee to Eradicate Racial Discrimination, right? Southern Center is a respected partner of many parties in this state and across the world. And what we are asking you to do is to heed the advice of the experts and at least do your due diligence to determine who is at that jail and what other mechanisms will allow other actors to put more pressure on people other than you. Where we are right now is the only legislative body being pressured with respect to the jail population is the city council. And because I practice criminal defense, we are well aware of the processes, okay? So, you'll hear from Public Policy Associate Michael Herskind, and you'll also hear from Devin Franklin. But we're just asking for you to vote the paper down or at least hold it here in committee. Thank you. And these are the documents.
Next, Micah Herskind.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Micah Herskind. I'm a policy associate at the Southern Center for Human Rights. And I do want to note that we stand in full support of the proposed legislation to make formerly incarcerated people a protected class in the city of Atlanta. As my colleague Tiffany discussed, we are here to continue to speak in opposition to the proposed lease and proceedings around the lease of the Atlanta City Detention Center, including the many questionable circumstances under which negotiations have proceeded. So, first, I'm here to speak a little bit about some of the requests of our recent open records, or results of some of our open records requests regarding communications between the city and the county regarding this lease. And so, what these emails show, as you can see in the packet that we provided, is that as, as early as at least June 2022, so two months before you all received legislation and voted upon it, Fulton County and Atlanta city employees were exchanging emails regarding the logistical preparations for this lease to go into effect, as well as discussing how to sort of communicate and do a press strategy around this lease. So, for example, on June 23rd, you can see an Atlanta employee sending multiple Fulton commissioners an email saying that, quote, "As we prepare for our pending collaboration." And then they, you know, proceed to talk about training. Another email on the 28th of June shows employees discussing the, quote, "COMS" approach to this jail lease. And so, these emails only represent sort of a partial set of emails, as we have not yet received the full responses. But what they show is that the Atlanta City Council throughout this process has been treated as a rubber stamp on this lease, rather than a true legislative body making decisions and, you know, charting direction for the city. And I hope you'll take some time to review those emails, as that, you know, they paint us really a startling picture about the authority of this council and sort of what the council has been briefed on before receiving legislation. That brings me to my next point, which is some more recent statements regarding the council from Fulton County Chairman Rob Pitts. So, if you might, as you might have seen, on October 6th, Mr. Pitts received, released a press release in which he says, quote, "Give us the damn keys to the jail." And in the same press release, he gestures to legal action against the city and says that he has contacted the Fulton attorney to explore legal options. The press coverage that emerged from these statements is also available and includes lines such as, quote, "Fulton Chair Rob Pitts threatens legal action against Atlanta," and "Fulton Chair Demands, quote, 'The Damn Keys to the Atlanta City Detention Center.'" Mr. Pitts is making these statements despite being one of two commissioners to actually vote against the lease in October. So, he didn't actually support the lease, but is making these comments. And all of this comes together to say, these communications and these statements really reflect a sense of entitlement on behalf of Fulton County to this facility, and they suggest that the mayor has been involved in discussions without keeping counsel in the loop. As we warned you in August, this, this lease is going to lead to increased legal liability, but more importantly, it's going to move forward this deal without actually addressing the systemic problems in Fulton County that lead to people being on the floor. And so, by, you know, by moving forward this lease, please do not sacrifice the opportunity to truly address the systemic issues at play in Fulton County, rather than just providing another Band-Aid solution that won't solve the problem. Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilpersons. My name is Devin Franklin. I am the Movement Policy Counsel for the Southern Center for Human Rights. My background, as I've told you all many times before, is as a litigator, 10 years as a public defender, 12 years as a public defender in Fulton County. But for our purposes, as it relates to this jail lease conversation, I have kind of turned into more of a data guy since day one of the conversation about this lease. Fulton County officials, the mayor's office, have spoken very generally about people on the floor. It was not until I began to make public comment suggesting the nature of the charges for which people are being held for, the bonds in which they are being held on, were relevant considerations that needed to be addressed in terms of evaluating the necessity of the lease and other actions that would alleviate the overcrowding at the jail. It wasn't until I began to speak about those things that we began to hear from other parties from Fulton County, from the sheriff's office, even from city council itself. I would like to thank that a large portion of the reason that we are at the point where we have a jail population review committee has to do with the debate that came around the legitimacy of the numbers that I proposed to you all and the subsequent numbers that Natalie Hall, Allison Adams, Sheriff Labatt have spoken to subsequently. That's the reason why we have the Justice Policy Board. And I believe that that board is uniquely qualified to address this question, right? It is made up of Councilman Hillis, it's made up of legal professionals from Fulton County, administrators from Fulton County, the Director of Psychiatric Services from Grady Health Services, the Chief Public Defender, the Solicitor from Fulton County, right? There are a lot of people with subject matter expertise that have a more attached reason for being able to answer the questions that are needed for us to properly evaluate whether this lease should go forward or not. Additionally, I want to talk about the safety concerns that have been alluded to regarding the persons who are in custody at Fulton County Jail. I believe it was last week, it may have been at this TCI event, that Sheriff Labatt spoke about the current vacancies within his department and the effect that that has on his ability to ensure the safety of persons there. There are 155 vacancies as of, within a week. And in order to properly staff and provide safety for persons at ACDC, these vacancies would need to be filled. He spoke about issues with retention, despite the fact that they've been able to engage in hiring, and that we do not appear to be at a position where the sheriff will be able to properly staff and provide safeguards for the persons who will be coming into Atlanta City Detention Center should this lease go through. More importantly, I would like to draw your attention to a letter that was sent by Sheriff Labatt to the Acting Director of the National Institute of Corrections, Shayna Vanek, in which, amongst other things, he required, he requested an investigation of potentially dangerous circumstances to include jail crowding, inmate attacks on inmates, custody staff, and alleged criminal activity by and arrest of employees and contractors. What that means is that a lot of these issues that we saw, the weapons brought into the jail, were brought into the jail by employees and contractors at Fulton County. The same contractors, the same employees that will be coming into ACDC. And I ask you all to consider what that liability issue would mean for the city.
Thanks, everyone. My name is Bridget Simpson, co-director of Bard Business. I'm here to speak of a paper that was held a couple weeks ago regarding justice impacted people being, having the ability to find housing and other things underneath a protected class for the Human Relations Bill. Just brought someone with me. I met this gentleman yesterday while doing outreach, and just wanted to take my time for him to just say who he is.
My name is Jeffrey Cash. My name is Jeffrey Cash. I got in trouble over two years ago. I was bringing for a hospital and an airport. I haven't been to court, I haven't been indicted, no longer able to work though, because my fingerprints say that I am a convicted felon. So, I'm being turned away from my job and other jobs. So, I hear all these people talking, but what's going on with us once we leave that jailhouse and we're being discriminated against, to work, to live, to feed our families? It's not fair to us either. Yes, nobody's perfect. We do make mistakes, but that shouldn't stop us from taking care of our families and living like a human being. We're not treated that way. Because our troubles we done done, and like I say, I haven't been indicted or court date in two years, and I, on my record, I'm a convicted felon and turned around from plenty of jobs. It's not, it's not fair. I have children, can't even take care of them. Yes, we make mistakes, but we're not, we are human, and I think what's going on in this world now is not fair to us.
Thank you. This gentleman worked at the airport for 16 years. He got into trouble, which he was not indicted for. He has been out on bond, has not had a court date, a hearing, or anything. He has been turned around, they've fingerprinted him again, random fingerprints, and he is unable now to work or provide for his family. The reason why he is here today and not at work is because of the discrimination that people like me face every day. I'm sure everyone knows my story by now. I served 10 years in the Georgia Department of Correction, and upon me returning home, I was homeless. I lived underneath a bridge, I lived in a car. So, because of my community, I was able to find mobility out of those situations, and I'm asking for you all to consider that I am now someone's community, and I too want to take them out of that same position. So, thank you, and thank you for your consideration.
First of all, good afternoon. Happy belated birthday to Mr. Amos, councilmember. As October's a great month. Let me, I planned on being really brief, all right? I did take an opportunity to address full counsel last week, but with some of the things that were misconstrued, I think it's important that you all get the facts. Devin got Devin got up and said that we had 155 vacancies. We do, right? APD has vacancies as well, right? Our job is to run the Fulton County Jail. As sheriff, it does not, it does not impact the city as to liability, the liability falls on the sheriff's office, period. Where our house individuals falls back on the sheriff's office, period. We developed a plan along with the administration to move ladies from Union City and the facility out at the South Annex, some of whom are sleeping on the floor, to ACDC along with the medical staff, along with the detention staff, along with the commissary and food staff, again, not requiring that Atlanta provide anything, period, full stop. We are simply leasing bed spaces. And to that end, my concern is that, and Tiffany gave you our lineage last week about how we go way back, like Cadillac seats, right? Way back. But to that point, it is a space that we live in where people are dying. And so if we can get people off the floor, right now, this morning, we had 485 people sleeping on the floor. And so we put together a plan along with the administration to move into getting people off the floor, one that was sustainable, one that was capped at 700 individuals. But here's the piece, what you hear before you that constantly is not true is that there is the ability to do one without the other. I welcome the census study. We are actually commissioning Tyler Industries to do some additional studies to that extent, right? What can we do? How can we be more transparent? What I don't get is the stalling as to why we can't do both at the same time, potentially save people's lives. If we moved everybody tomorrow, any of the studies that came up, whether it be speeding the judges up, and here's the piece, 90% of what is said today I agree with, absolutely agree with, because we are in a space that we can work together and a collaborative agreement that says, "We don't have to wait 90 days, we should just simply move forward." Because anything that is gleaned from the study, it does not matter where you're housed. I simply, I take an oath, and that oath is to treat those that are brought to the jail and which I am keeper, in the most humane fashion there is. And so to each of you that have taken the tour, I appreciate it. I've offered that same tour to everybody. We are completely transparent. And I'll leave you with this, for individuals to say that it is a safety concern, that's what jails are, is a huge safety concern, but the fewer people we can put behind doors and the only person you can assault is your roommate, becomes 485 people sleeping on the floor, the ability to walk around and continue to attack people, and the assertion that my team, I have heroes and she-heroes that work there every day. Do you have bad apples? Absolutely. And we work to eradicate bad apples. So don't make any assertion when you come up here speaking about my deputies, detention officers, or alike, because we are the best of the best. As a matter of fact, there was a stabbing this morning at the corner of Mitchell and Pryor that our deputies went out to make sure you were safe when you were able to walk up near City Hall to take care of. So the assertion that it is my individuals bringing, where there are bad apples, we will really cut that cancer out, and we've begun to do that. And so those heroes and she-heroes that go to work every day do just that, go with an understanding that sometimes their lives are in danger, but we know that to be the case. It is the building that's falling apart. That's nobody's part, nobody's problem in here except Fulton County, not the council, not members of the audience. It is quite simply something that we are embarking on to build a new facility, a facility that really focuses on the human interest of what it looks like to getting people back to work when they exit the facility. And it was that, and again, 90% of what I heard I agree with. Judges, the county is really hiring more judges to really ramp up and churn through this piece. I'll end with this, in 64 days, because I'm a data person too, and one of the things I had to understand is what does it look like for our population as well as our she-heroes and heroes when they're assaulted? In the last 60 days, we've had 64 stabbings. Make sure you mark that, Devin. And to that point, I reached out to the Bureau of Justice Assistance, asking them to be very specific, to do a security audit. So when all the people that come up and say, "We don't need a new jail," now you have the federal government that stands side by side in lockstep before the Board of Commissioners to say, "You're going to have to spend a billion dollars to keep people safe." And so to that end, I appreciate the time. If there are any questions about it, I support the removal of the 90-day piece in conjunction with making sure we do the same, do things simultaneously, and that has been my ask from day one, is that whatever you need, we want to make sure we get you, right? And that is you, plural. If there are better ways for us to do business, we want to know that simultaneously. So I'm going to remove myself. I appreciate you all, appreciate the time, and appreciate everybody's input. So again, I'm around if anybody has any additional questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff, for your comments and your service as an elected official. That concludes our public comment. We will move to presentations. First, we will have our bi-weekly report from the Atlanta Police Department. Deputy Chief Pete, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman Hillis and all city council members. Amos Boone, Norwood, Overstreet, and Waits, we welcome you and thank you for having this briefing for us, for this current bi-weekly briefing on behalf of Chief Sheeran. Certainly always look forward to working closely with city council to ensure that we're able to meet the needs of the citizens of Atlanta and the Atlanta Police Department as well. As we move forward with this, week 37, actually, not the actual correct one. This one should be week 39. Okay, well, excellent. So if you got the paper, we're good to go then. We won't worry about the presentation. You all can walk with me on that particular one. I'll just back that up. Yeah, that's 9/26, so that one's the old one. I'll just leave that. As we move forward with the actual paper copy there, what we'd like to certainly highlight is, and we look at our overall crime right now, so we're at a 5% increase of 2021. Certainly happy about what we're seeing as far as our violent crime numbers. Our overall violent crime is down 2% for year-to-date. So that's great, those are great numbers with our homicide numbers. For this reporting period is actually at 0%. We're flat to where we were last year. Our rape numbers are down 18% year-to-date, and then our aggravated assaults are down 1% year-to-date. As we look at the 28-day, there's that slight similar uptick, but when we look at the overall violent crimes a year-to-date, we've got that 3% increase. So we're certainly looking, certainly knowing that we're headed in the right direction. As we come down and we look below at the actual property crimes, we're at a 6% increase, which robbery, we're at an 8% decrease. So the ones that we really and truly look at, what impacts us most is the robberies. We're down on that one at 8%. But let's look at our auto crimes. That's really our focus. Our auto thefts are down 6% year-to-date for this actual reporting period, it's down 18%. The 28-day, which covers actually 28 to 56 days, we're down 6%. What that tells us is that if we can control the auto theft numbers, we can make an impact, particularly with the larceny from auto numbers. And let's see, since we got that one up there, we are, we're able to see what we're talking about now for everyone else. So yeah, we're able to have an impact. If we can control the auto theft numbers, we can actually control the larceny from autos, because what generally happens are those vehicles that are left running with keys, idling, dropping off food for different locations, or picking up, that vehicle is used and is taken to commit other crimes such as the robberies as well as the car break-ins, the auto larcenies. So we're certainly liking the trend of where we are, 0% for the 28-day, so we're certainly flat on that one, 10% for the 7-day period. So we're certainly doing the right things in the right places, and the other concerning number that we look at is the burglaries, although for this particular period, we're down 12%. The 28-day, we're down 15%, but year-to-date, we're still up 19%. What we're seeing with the trends on those particular burglaries is we're having a large increase in the actual houses that are under construction. While they're under construction, they're bringing in the appliances and different things like such, so you'll have people, perhaps maybe with the knowledge of what's being put into that home, they're coming back after the fact and those appliances or different things while it's under construction are being taken. So our units, our zone units, our crime prevention inspectors often go out, visit those areas, find out who the builders are, have conversations, so that we can put better plans in place so that we don't stock a home before it's actually ready for turnkey and someone take control of that location while it's just vacant and sitting out there. So certainly doing the right thing to try to get those numbers under control. So as we look at the aggravated assaults, again, we just reported year-to-date, we're down, but this one is more specific to the actual aggravated assaults that encompasses any type of weapon or any type of offense, whether it be a fist to where I'm hitting you, striking you, attempting to rob you, but for this particular purpose, these are just people that have been shot. Year-to-date, we're down 12%. So those numbers are great as we talk about the person shot, 1% for regular aggravated assaults, but down 12% for shootings, down 31% for the weak. So we're actually know that we're driving those numbers. You look down from the week, 31% down, 28-day, 14% down, so we're really driving those numbers in the right place. So we start looking at where are we, where are we seeing our most successes? Zone 1, as far as their person shot, down 57%. Great numbers. Zone 3, down 45%. Zone 6, down 17%. So as we looked at the summer initiative and the heat wave and all of those other initiatives that we put in place, putting the right people in the right place and really and truly partnering and trying to push that information out so that we could be smarter about what we're doing day-to-day and focusing on the gangs, the guns, and the drugs. If we can stop those and get the right people off the street, then we could keep someone from getting shot, because a lot of it is happening between interactions that they're having as far as illegal activities. We look at the year-to-date, the year-to-date reductions, Zone 2, down 33% year-to-date for their gunshot issues. Of course, we know that those were centered around the clubs and the nightlife industry for the most part, and so continuing to have those meetings, those trainings, working closely with all of those entities, ensuring that our nuisance property list keeps moving and it keeps a focus, we're having great impact on that. Of course, Zone 4 comes in second place year-to-date with a 21% reduction. We certainly recognize some of the issues we had. We've adjusted those resources to deal with the parks and those other locations where we've seen previously we've had challenges. And of course, then we follow up with Zone 5 being in that third place with a 35% reduction to where we are. So we certainly, again, believe that we're on the right track to really and truly keeping Atlanta, making Atlanta even safer than it is right now. As we move forward, as we talk about some of the initiatives that we're putting in place, so here's one of the things that we were looking at, and so every week, we focus on our top five people, but for this particular location, this was a gentleman that was responsible for shooting somebody, and we've been looking for him for the last two years. This just shows the tenacity of our fugitive unit as they've continued to go out and continued to try to find the worst of the worst. This gentleman had really and truly been one of those thorns for us, and we had been looking for him for about two years. Our fugitive team finally developed some information, got a possible location, went out and tried to make contact to take the person into custody. He wasn't willing to come out at that particular time, so we initiated our SWAT team, hostage negotiators, went out to the scene and got all of our tactical field operators and everyone Zone 4 personnel there to really put a good plan in place. We were able to breach and make entry and utilize our drones and all the other issues, but we were able to take this gentleman into custody without any incident, and so Atlanta is safer for him being off the street. Those are the types of resources that we always have in play, and when we bring those resources together collectively when we see issues, we're always able to mitigate those situations and not have any unnecessary issues to our citizens or to any officers, because we don't want anyone injured. Moving forward, we discussed property crimes just a few moments ago, so what does that look like? What do we mean by property crime? So our number one driving factor based on this chart, when you look down below, and I'm sorry, it didn't move forward, let me, here we go, make sure I keep up. Theft from autos, car break-ins account for 37% of our property crimes, and that same number is pretty much across the board for our regular overall crime. That's the largest crime that we have, so we can't let up from having those conversations about clean car campaign, ensuring that you're securing weapons, because those weapons that leave cars are oftentimes involved with other crimes. But looking at that theft from auto number, we've utilized our ACE unit, our Auto Crimes Enforcement Unit, and another number of units to really and truly get out there along with the crime prevention inspectors and the business communities, going out, looking, assessing properties, looking and figuring out what we can do different, what type of technology do we need, what type of environmental changes we can make that will really and truly make it harder for someone to come in and commit crimes like auto larcenies on those properties and even in our neighborhoods. So that number continues to be a challenge with 12% up, but 15% down for this reporting period and for the 28-day, 6%. So we just continue to chip off at that particular number, and I think we'll ultimately be able to get some even larger wins as we move forward. As I talk about that detail, here's the detail that we were just speaking of, so auto crime enforcement detail, we have them periodically when we see specific trends, so we bring together Georgia State Patrol, the Atlanta Police Department, Fulton County Sheriff Office, along with a number of entities within APD, from APX Unit, our Crime Suppression Teams, of course, our Aviation Unit, Always Runs Point, Gang Unit, Intel Analysis, we just utilize a lot of resources to go in and hit these particular locations. And the reason we use so many resources is because simply it requires that. When we put it together and we're thoughtful about how we do it and we have a strategic approach to it, this is what we end up finding out. When we put that detail together and went forward with it, we were able to make 14 arrests on those, 10 warrants cleared, four convicted felons taken off the street, four charged with the criminal street gang activity, which is ultimately our focus, again, gangs, guns, and narcotics. We're trying to look, always look at those. So when we look at that, there were a total number of arrest cycles with that 14-person group, 98 total arrests represented in those criminal histories. So those are our challenges, it's nothing new, but it's something that we continue to highlight, that we look forward. Again, with that same detail, five stolen vehicles that we were able to recover, one of them was even stolen, believe it or not a Rolls Royce, stolen out of Quebec. So that's where you see so much is happening, and so it was multiple other stolen vehicles recovered that were recovered from inside the city of Atlanta. Again, focusing on the guns, five guns recovered, one handgun with what we call a switch, and what does that switch do that makes that pistol able to shoot as an automatic weapon? Very, very dangerous. So now you have a weapon that can shoot like an automatic weapon, which is certainly banned from our streets and shouldn't be out there. So getting the information, going out, being smart, being strategic about what we're doing and what we're seeing in the street allows us to take these types of things off the street. Just to further look into that particular detail as we was moving forward, they got information and was able to find this particular vehicle. Here's where the intel takes place. So they found this vehicle, got into a pursuit, it did not meet quite what we need for us to continue to pursue it, so you have to let it go, but they were able to immediately find it about five minutes later, on fire over at Boulder Park Drive. Go back and you do the intel and you find out, look at the individuals that are on the left, standing on the very vehicle that you see now burned up on the right. So utilizing that intel, conducting preliminary and post-investigation so that we can go back and get those people and put them in custody for the crimes that they're committing against the city of Atlanta and our citizens. That was done in Zone 3 and then transitioned over to Beat 106 in Zone 1, and ultimately we got about five warrants for suspects right now. So another great detail, great units, great coordination. We couldn't do that without having all of those entities in place to work together to coordinate those details. coordinate those details. So guns, gangs, illegal drugs, weapons recovered, this is always our focus, weapons recovered across the city with 12% up. There's an increase in every single zone of us seizing weapons off the street. You look at it, zone one at 11, zone two, 20% increase of us seizing, uh, guns, recovering guns off the street, 9% up for zone three, 51% for zone four, significant increase, significant increase. Zone five, I'm in error, zone five is actually 17% down, zone six, 18% up. So zone five, their, their, their seizure numbers are down, but also we're looking at what we're doing and the number of resources that we put in place. Zone five has been the epicenter of where people are taking cars and then turning around and utilizing them in the midtown area to take them from there. And we generally find them back in the zone one, zone four areas. And then we find them as they're moving throughout the city, uh, committing other crimes. So our, uh, Connect Atlanta system, FUSE system has been, uh, that been extremely helpful for us moving forward and making those, uh, contacts. Repeat offenders for this particular week, 29 folk that we looked at in the week 39, 29 people, a lot of those 29, the average age was 41 years old, the average number of arrests, 30, and the total number of felony convictions that we saw within those people were six. One individual, one individual, it's very concerning, arrested 89 times, 89 times, one individual. So the system has failed this individual unfortunately.
How, how could it have been 89 times?
Cycled in and out of the jail.
Please hold the question until the end.
I'm sorry.
We'll get to that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll follow back up and answer any questions. One individual was arrested in his lifespan, 89 times. Five are documented gang members. One individual was convicted of felony charges 24 times where he's gone to jail and received charges. Eight were arrested in possession of firearms. So there's those guns that are out there with repeat offenders, with the gangs, with the drugs, with the illegal narcotics, it all ties in together. So, uh, what are we trying to do from a proactive standpoint? Certainly we're going out and policing and doing all that we can do to get those individuals off the street, the ones that need to get the resources, we're steering them in those ways. But then here's the other thing, how do we impact the minds of people so that we can keep them from going back out there and committing other crimes, dealing with the issues of recidivism? So that ties us into where we were this past weekend, along with our prior detail, which went well, along with Operation Peace with the midnight, uh, basketball, although the police and public safety team, we lost, but we played a great, great game, but we had some great bonding with some of our youth, um, in the area. And so then we look at faith and blue, one of the other initiatives that really started and will give credit where credit due is Reverend Markell Hutchins, who came together and saw the need to bring community and faith together along with police department to effect change. We had a number of our faith locations throughout the city this weekend where we partnered up with the police department. We were able to really get in there and have some great critical conversations that just really and truly need to be had. Uh, such good conversations to where we were able to experience some youth who have decided, you know what, I've seen too many of my friends die at the hands of weapons and they've decided to change their lives, they're doing what they need to do. So what we have done is really and truly highlighted our, uh, at promise centers to really put the resources in place and put them into movement so that we could get into our communities and change the lives of our individuals and if not by arrests, by other means that we could really and truly get them back on the right track. Uh, so we've had some great conversations. We look forward to growing that program and not waiting to next October, but starting as soon as next month, having some additional conversations and some, some, uh, additional community contacts to, uh, really and truly focus on our young people so that we can, uh, really and truly keep them out of the system, but let them be more proactive and, uh, able to be a great contributor to society. Closing out on our last slide is where we are with our Connect Atlanta system. So we are now currently over 10,000 integrated cameras. Thank you all for your help, for helping us really push that narrative what's out there. Thank you for the insight of, uh, telling us, you know, to get it onto the city's APD's website so that we can get those contacts out there. Registered cameras are at 5815, so we're really headed in the right direction. We're able to utilize all of that to really and truly, uh, be more proactive and more successful with the investigations, but then seeing things ahead of time, we're able to really send people in place out there before a crime takes place. When we see it brewing, we can send the resources out there to stop it. But of course, we always like to highlight the case where we had the young lady who was, uh, missing, experiencing dementia and the officer utilizing the very MDT that's in that car, looking at that camera system, that network, following it through MARTA and all of the other entities, determining where she actually got off that bus when she was missing from right around the corner, to being able to spend a couple hours to locate her and return her safely home to her family. That's what we want to do. That's what we want to be known for and that's what we want to continue our focus for the Atlanta Police Department so that we can really and truly keep our citizens safe. At that point, that concludes the actual presentation and I'll be open to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, Deputy Chief Pete. Colleagues, if you have questions or comments, please indicate with your speaker button. Councilmember Norwood.
Um, Deputy Chief, uh, I would like to get the, uh, redacting his name, um, but I would like the 89 different charges and I would like to know which judge adjudicated each one of those, um, those cases. I want to know, I want to know what happened. What happened on number, on, um, uh, number 30? What happened on number 45? Do we have the same judge who was involved in a significant minority of those cases or majority of those cases? Let's, let's take the one that, that was important enough for you to point out and let's know what, when, that, I want date, I want court, um, judge, I want disposition, I want how long in jail, if in jail or ACDC or whatever, and let's, let's go through 89. It will be an important list for us.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other colleagues, questions, concerns, comments? Thank you, Deputy Chief Pete, for the presentation. Um, colleagues, we were supposed to have the APD quarterly today, but we rescheduled it to the next meeting because Chief Sheerbaum is out of town. Uh, but I would like to, if you would communicate a few items that I would like to see in that presentation. Number one, as I'd like to see, um, I'm big on quality metrics and a lot of departments have started leaving those out of their presentations. Uh, I'd like to see at the very least, uh, what our 911 call taking times have been uh, so far this year. If you could break it down monthly, hopefully we see, we've seen some improvement. Like to see the number of, and I can get the overall number of cars out of service from DBW because they handle fleet, but probably only APD would know, I want to know the amount of cruisers we have active per zone. And I'm not talking about paddy wagons, I mean actual cruisers, because I know that number has been low. Um, and if you could get each council member a list of the LPRs and PTZ cameras in their district, a list and map. Um, and also an item that I requested, I think back in September or so is, uh, per council district, the number of cameras that are down and how long each have been down? Has that has been an issue historically?
Absolutely.
And then an update on the repeat offender unit that you all partner with, uh, the DA's office on.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll get that in a, in a single document so that you can get it and walk through it just off the top of my head as we look at the number. We did get an update this morning with our patrol cars. So we're starting to see a decrease. I think the number came down to where we're now somewhere, when you look at overall numbers, uh, I believe we were able to return about 20 or so, so we're down to about 80 patrol cars in the shop now. So it's certainly headed in the right way because it, we were well over 100. So, uh, we're starting to get that and really looking at it. Thanks for the emergency procurements and the pushing through of everything so that we could get some additional, uh, uh, people out working on those cars. But I will certainly ensure that I follow up, um, with all of these numbers and try to get them into the report and we'll keep them there on a weekly basis until such.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Uh, Councilmember Waits.
Chief, thank you so much for everything that you do. I'm just curious, for all of the APS schools, I've been noticing that the cameras are being placed, I'm assuming that they're tied into the big system. Can you confirm that this is true of all the schools for the entire city of Atlanta?
So what we're doing and what we're trying naturally, I believe at this point APS, they're giving us forward facing external so that we can really look at it. And also when we have that issue to where we need to tie in on an internal, that would be a separate request that we would have, but they are working on that. I spoke with Chief Appleton a couple of weeks ago, trying to get those updates. So it's two things that we're looking at on their cameras for those external facing, but outside those actual schools, uh, as well as the, uh, speed zones, really and truly still working on getting those up. Because here's the other thing, we've noticed recently, we've had some people, some, uh, children that have been struck by vehicles, not within the school zone itself, but if it doesn't stop everywhere else, then we can see it trying to slide into there. So we're trying to really cover all of those bases so we can slow the cars down and keep our children and citizens safe.
Okay. So can you and I connect on that? Because I'm, I'm curious, that's something that I'm interested in, given the challenges that we're having nationwide in terms of violence. And so I'm just excited because I noticed right here in my neighborhood, I saw the entire perimeter of the school, uh, with those particular cameras and I think that's an asset to the city. And I don't know what the cost is involved, but I'm sure we could get some corporate and philanthropic support to make sure this happens all over the city.
Absolutely. Love to follow up on it.
Any other questions or comments for Deputy Chief Pete? All right, thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you all.
Next up is quarterly presentation from AFRD, Atlanta Fire Rescue Department. Chief Smith, welcome to you and your brigade that you brought.
Good afternoon, Chairman Hillis, council members. As you can see, we have put the band together and so we are here to present, uh, the quarterly numbers for Atlanta Fire Rescue, uh, today. Uh, I'll be tag teaming with First Deputy Chief James McLamore, uh, to provide those, uh, numbers and that information to you. We'll start with the goals and objectives of Atlanta Fire Rescue as we work, uh, with the City of Atlanta Administration to ensure that fire equipment is fully staffed, uh, we maintain pay equity, uh, throughout the department for sworn and civilian employees. Uh, we will continue to enhance and repair, uh, our repairs and replacements of AFRD facilities as well as our fleet. Uh, we will continue to provide a safe working environment for all employees and develop, implement and maintain comprehensive hiring and recruiting plans moving forward. Uh, we will work with the council to review salary, benefits and other compensation to ensure adequate compensation, um, rates are established for all employees. Uh, we will continue to review EMS services in the city, um, looking to make improvements as well as we will, uh, review the conditions of fleet and facilities with you guys on a regular basis, uh, so that we can stay in lockstep with moving, uh, the city and the department forward. I'll turn it over now to, uh, First Deputy Chief McLamore and he will present the particulars. However, I will make myself available to answer any questions, uh, that may arise on behalf of the department.
Good afternoon, council. Again, I'm James McLamore and serve as the first deputy with the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department. Um, first topic, we will be going over our service metrics for the last quarter. And as you can see, um, in July, we had a total of 6,766 calls. August, a slight increase, 6,932. And in September, 7,459, giving us a total of 21,157. So just kind of looking at it, over the last two fiscal years, um, we have, have an increase downtown and also at the aviation department. So as you can see, as things continue to open up, uh, our calls will increase and also at the aviation, in aviation, as air travel continues and people start to travel more, our calls will increase. Also our inspections numbers for the last quarter, fiscal year 23, quarter one, in July, we had a total of 443 inspections and August, 601 and September, a total of 536, giving us a total of 1580 for quarter one. Next, our fiscal year, 2022, fourth quarter sworn attrition. In July, we had a total of three members to retire, six resigned and one was terminated. In August, we had a total of three resigned, five were terminated. And in September, we have one retired and two resigned. And that's, um, within the sworn section of our organization. Okay, next, I will move over to our civilian attrition. In July, we had a total of four were terminated and then in August, two were terminated and two resigned. And in September, we had one resignation. So moving forward, our current recruit classes, which will put more firefighters into service in our organization, our anticipated graduation for our class 2102B, which will currently has a total of 27 recruits. The graduation is anticipated for them in early of January 2023. Our class 2201, which has a total of 19 recruits currently, is anticipated to graduate December of 2022, coming up. And also down the line, we have two more recruit classes that are currently in our EMS section, uh, class 2202, which has a total of 24 recruits and 2203, which has a total of 31 recruits currently. And they're anticipated to grad, graduate, um, third quarter 2023. All right. Next, um, some updates on our fleet. Got a couple of corrections from what is, uh, listed above. So we have one 1,500 gallon pumper and one tractor drawn aerial truck that have been ordered and are expected to be delivered actually the second quarter of fiscal year 24. The engine in the truck both went in at the same time and upcoming in May of 23 or the fourth quarter of 23, we have three reserve apparatuses that were purchased and they're in the pre-construction phase and they're on our 180 program, so they should be turned around in six months. All right, next, the aviation fleet. Recently, we just had two Rosenbauer Panther ARF trucks delivered, that was in September. We have one in construction currently, which is due around May of 2023. We have a 2022 F-350 mini pumper in the, currently in the construction phase, estimated completion is around August of 23. And a Ford Escape SUV, two of them, for community risk reductions. And that was ordered by DOA, which is a, which has an estimated delivery around mid-year of 2023. All right, next, our facilities, facility updates. Station 12 is on track for completion, which is, should be in a few days with a move-in date of October 21st, 2022. We have a current update that's different from on the screen, Station 19, which is in the North Highland area. It is, the due date was, um, October 11th, but it's looking more towards the end of the week. Also, Fire Station 22, the bid was awarded and currently, uh, materials are in the acquisition phase and the, um, date of delivery, um, that will be determined down the line once construction starts. Uh, Fire Station 32 has been completed, just about complete, ribbon cutting is tentatively scheduled for some, I mean for November, uh, with a move-in date of October 28th, but the ribbon cutting has been scheduled for November. Uh, Station 36, the new station out in Princeton Lakes, uh, it's been delayed slightly, uh, the estimated completion is February of 2023. The new Fire Station 37, the EMS station, which is located on, uh, Hamilton and County Line, um, its estimated completion is November 23rd, 2022. Also, the EMS center located at Hartsfield, Jackson. Also, the EMS center located at Hartsfield, Jackson, has been completed and we're working on the staffing. The staffing is in progress for it. We're doing, currently doing some interviews to hire for those positions. The burn building temporarily, the temporary burn building that's scheduled to go to Claire Drive, the pre-construction is complete and the delivery is scheduled for November 29 of 2022. Accomplishments so far for fiscal year 23. Atlanta Fire Rescue Department completed the first, well, completed our sworn employee personnel promotion exam for our lieutenants and captains. Attended the annual Blue Mass Celebration in partnership with local community partners. We successfully had our fall boot drive supporting nonprofits such as Sickle Cell Foundation of Georgia, the Georgia Firefighter Burn Foundation, and the Gold Shield Foundation. With that being said, are there any questions or comments you have for Atlanta Fire?
Thank you. First up is Councilmember Waits.
Thank you so much. I wanted to take this opportunity to commend the Atlanta Fire Service. As you guys already know, on October 3, there was a fire that occurred at 700 Stanton Road Building E. And not only did I receive phone calls from those constituents, but I also worked very closely with Special Project Coordinator Claudia Nash, in addition to Battalion Chief Greer. There were seven units that were impacted and seven families displaced. And the challenge was in connecting with Red Cross. Both of these individuals stayed on site to ensure that these families got some housing for that evening, because many of them, because it was fairly cold that evening, didn't have any further clothing. And I just want to thank each of you for going beyond the call of duty. I was someone that was impacted by a childhood fire. And so this particular situation kind of just dredged up some old things for me. And so I just want to again express my gratitude and hope my colleagues will join me in presenting recognition and a proclamation to the individuals that were on site that particular night. So thank you Chief, and all the work that you all do in terms of ensuring that our city is safe. And I would also like to invite the Red Cross Officer who was on duty that particular evening, and this was Sea Shift, 700 Stanton Road, Aspen Court Apartments. And so for the seven families that were displaced and the 10 units that were impacted, we again thank you for your service and all that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Got a couple of questions. I know there's a recommended number of firefighters to be on each apparatus. Are we to that staffing level yet, or how far your guesstimate we are from there?
We're getting there. We're getting there. Actually, we, we're meeting our minimum staffing, staffing. And as we continue, we have a high attrition rate coming because we have a lot of people coming upon their 30 years and retiring. So we are actively recruiting. We have a large number and we have the max capacity at our training center now to meet that goal. So yes, we are, we do have our four and three staffing, and we're continually recruiting and training. And you know, as they graduate, we have them ready to go. So yeah, we're there. We're getting there.
I know it'd be probably a good guesstimation, but as during budget season, you talked about bringing on the EMS station and more paramedic training for our firefighters. With the closing of Atlanta Medical, how would that impact medical services on the north side of town or even downtown? Would we have to do more fire services to make up what would be missing or the strain on Grady at that particular time? I know it'd be a guesstimation, but...
So the closing of the hospitals does not directly affect our ability to provide service. We are in the pre-hospital setting. The impact you would see is that when we do start transporting, you start looking at longer wall times and keeping units out of service. But we're working with the partners to change that response model and develop a new model which incorporates Atlanta Fire in transporting on that south side of town.
Then two, two quick things which can go together, two very important pieces of what you do. Update on the Citizens Fire Academy and also the program to where you put our young people directly from school to fire services. If you can start including that into your update, that'd, that'd be helpful as well.
We will do.
Say that, Councilmember Amos.
Thank you.
Councilmember Waits, did you have another question or comment? Okay. Colleagues, anyone else please indicate. I'll go ahead. If you could just elaborate again on the correction to the reserve apparatuses that we are in the process of obtaining, what are those?
So we are purchasing the original GMA approval, which is the one and one, which is the one engine and the one ladder. And we added an additional three engines that would be going directly to the reserve fleet to offset those challenges that we're having with replacement vehicles when they go down for either regular routine maintenance or unexpected maintenance so that we will have more engines to put in service.
How are those procured? Are they directly from other departments? Are they through a service that...
So we modified our building specification. I think Deputy Chief McLamore spoke about how we have a reduced or condensed time turnaround to receive those. We realized that they will be primarily in the reserve fleet, so we changed the specifications to give us a more generalized vehicle. And so the manufacturers can turn those around a lot quicker getting those to us.
How old are those vehicles?
They will be brand new.
Oh, okay. Got you. So they're not, they're going into the reserve, but they're not second, they're brand new?
Correct. We're addressing the older vehicles in the fleet.
And that is, you just said Q4 of '23. Do you mean fiscal year '23?
What did you say?
Or calendar year '23?
Fourth quarter fiscal year '23.
Okay. On the recruit, the recruiting classes, just a question about the names of the classes. So is there a reason there's a 2102B instead of a 2103?
So they typically start, then the first number is going to be the year that the class starts. And then that second number would be which class or the successive number of the class. Now they'll add an A or a B depending on if there is a split of a class. We may start off with, say, a 211. And so we end up having to split that class, or there ends up having to be some remedial training. Then just to maintain the integrity, they'll add an A and a B so that we know that they originally started together.
And then another request, and to Chief Peak as well, I'd definitely ask him for metrics on 911 response time, but also would like unit response times from APD. And I know you classify calls, both of you classify calls, different levels of priority. So if you could start providing your average response times, that would be appreciative to.
With it.
Historically, that's been done in these presentations. And just a comment, hoping we can start moving forward on Station 22, which we've been talking about for a number of years.
A very long time. So I'm glad that we've got a contractor in place. And so I've had the conversations with DEAM about the urgency of getting that station up and completed. And so I'm confident that it's going to move forward very quickly.
Have any other info as far as timeline?
Last timeline I got was completion by the end of calendar year '23.
All right. Any other questions, comments, colleagues? All right, thank you Chief.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our presentations for this meeting. Move on to our consent agenda, taking up claims with favorable and unfavorable recommendations. I'll make a motion to accept all favorable claims. That's items one through four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Overstreet. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. The vote is closed.
Five yays, zero nays. Those four items are favorable. I'll make a motion to adverse all unfavorable claims. That's items five through 60. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
Vote is closed.
Six yays, zero nays. Those items are adverse. Onto the regular agenda ordinances for second reading, 2201765.
An ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to waive Chapter 2, Article 11, Division 1, Section 2-910 grant applications of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to ratify the City of Atlanta's grant application with the Bureau of Justice Assistance at the U.S. Department of Justice for a BGA governmental unit grant to support the operating costs associated with the Center for Diversion and Services, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to accept the award of the grant funding and to amend the FY 2023 budget in the amount of $2,988.0 to anticipate and appropriate grant funds from BGA to authorize the mayor or his desert need to enter into any required agreements necessary for the implementation of this award and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Six yays, zero nays. That item is favorable. Item number two, 2201774.
An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to amend Section 13 of Ordinance 2201632 to remove the condition providing that the intergovernmental agreement between the Fulton County Sheriff, Fulton County, Georgia, and the City of Atlanta authorized thereby shall not be effective until Atlanta City Council shall be in receipt of a jail population review report as determined therein and for the purposes.
All right, colleagues, this is in front of us. The sponsor is not present, and I was also told that Councilmember Dozier, who is here, would like to speak. So unless anyone has any opening comments, I'll go ahead and defer to Councilmember Dozier. Councilmember Dozier, please.
Firstly, I just want to thank you Chair Hillis and the members of this body for allowing me to speak to you all today. For the public, I'm Councilmember Jason Dozier, and as you all know, I represent Atlanta City Council District Four, which is also where the Atlanta City Detention Center currently sits. I ran on a platform of transparency and accountability, on a platform of open and honest and responsive government that values citizen input and community engagement. And I just want to say that integrity was one of the core Army values that was instilled in me and my Secret Service in the Army. And so this is all to say that I've heard a lot about this amendment that was added to the IGA as being a stalling tactic, as being that we're fiddling while Rome burns, and it's not that. The amendment does not curtail the IGA at all. The language of the IGA amendment specifically states that the IGA shall not be effective until the date that the Atlanta City Council shall be in receipt of a jail population review report, which shall be prepared to increase awareness concerning the relative populations of persons detained in the custody of Fulton County and the City of Atlanta. And it further says that this, this shall, the, we will conduct the jail population review as described herein and to deliver the report on a review by no later than 90 days from the approval of this ordinance. It doesn't say that what is determined, what is identified, what is, comes out of that review will make the IGA null and void. It gives the, the Justice Policy Board 90 days to complete the review, and that's it. And I go back to the comment that has been shared in the media before about this has been a stall tactic. It is alarming considering that this amendment was approved by City Council on August the 15th. It's been almost two months. If this goes forward, when we debate this again at full council, it'll be over two months, two months since the Fulton County Commission also debated and approved this. And in that two months, we could have been done with this. If that information was shared more quickly, this, this would all be over. And what we have seen unfortunately from our partners at Fulton County is stalling. And I say it's stalling because we've seen and what's been shared before, what's been shared with you all, is our email correspondences where Fulton County staff was asked to quote, "Put any work related to the jail population review on hold." And so that was alarming to me. I hope that is alarming to you all. And so the last thing I'll just say on the timing of this is that I asked for this information in the weeks and months prior to our vote on the IGA, including directly to the sheriff during our visit at Rice Street to see the conditions of the city jail. He alluded to that during our conversation at full council last Monday. And I will just reiterate that despite assurances, I received not an email, not a phone call, not a text message, even though I was told that we will be receiving that data and that information. It's why I put forth this amendment that this ordinance seeks to overturn into the IGA in the first place, because transparency and accountability are core values of mine, and I believe they're core values for this city. And so I'll come back to this. Yes, we have a fiduciary duty because of this, and in essence, a $51 million transaction is what we're talking about with this IGA over four years. But we're also talking about people. 700 souls are to be transferred into a city-owned facility, and so we shouldn't be afraid to look into what we're actually agreeing to. When we buy a house, we do our due diligence. When we decide to attend a college, we visit the college, we talk to professors, talk to other parents. So we should do that due diligence as well as we go forward with this particular IGA. Just want to also add too that getting and following this data can point to short and long-term data solutions that will get everyone off the boats and the floor at the, at the Fulton County Jail, and it will create systems that stop people from being put on the floor in the first place. I know the conversation or the statement we stated earlier about we can do this simultaneously, we want to do this first so that we can guide that transition, guide that transfer so we know the people who are coming into an Atlanta City facility are the right people. And so I will close with something that I shared with the Atlanta General Constitution a couple of weeks ago. Trust and partnership need transparency, and efforts to curtail the work of the Justice Policy Board can imperil that. If anything, this review will make the sheriff's job easier. It will increase efficiencies, reduce harm, and make this the collaborative cross-government partnership that we're all aspiring towards. Let's not shy away from transparency. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Councilmember Dozier, we do have two signed up to speak, but I first defer to the sponsor who's joined us now. Councilmember Bond, any words?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank our colleague, Mr. Dozier, for his, the concerns that he raised. Well, just to, oh, hello? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank Mr. Dozier for his comments. I introduce this, well, first I want to ask, I'll ask the law department, who is authorized under the city charter to negotiate on behalf of the City of Atlanta? Contracts, agreements, et cetera?
Good afternoon. Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. In accordance with the Charter of the City of Atlanta, the mayor is given the authority to negotiate agreements on behalf of the City of Atlanta, and therefore the mayor's staff is able to do so. Various offices and departments have been given that authority through the power given the mayor in the charter. The mayor's Office of Intergovernmental Affairs is an office that is authorized to do this. The Department of Procurement obviously negotiates contracts on behalf of the executive branch as well.
So it's the executive branch that negotiates contracts and agreements with other governments?
That's correct.
Other governmental entities?
That's correct.
Okay. And next, I would ask, who in Fulton County has responsibility for maintaining the care, custody, and control of state charges and state felonies?
So state misdemeanors and, and felonies in, as defined by state law, provide the... So state misdemeanors and felonies in, as defined by state law, the Fulton County is responsible for the housing of the vast majority of those persons charged with those crimes. There are certain misdemeanors where the city has concurrent jurisdiction and also is able to house and adjudicate those matters, mostly traffic. There are a few non-traffic misdemeanors that would fall in the city's concurrent jurisdiction. But other than misdemeanors specifically set forth in state law where the city has concurrent jurisdiction, the exclusive jurisdiction is the state, and therefore the county has the exclusive responsibility to regarding those persons.
That officer at the county is the high sheriff of a county. Is that correct?
For the housing? For the housing of those persons? That's correct. And the detention of those persons? It would be the sheriff.
So yes, my third question is, was there anything negotiated between the sheriff and the administration that contemplated a delay in or deferring to a outside entity within that agreement for its approval?
I, of course, cannot speak to the negotiations. However, I can state that in an intergovernmental agreement, though, the ability to negotiate said agreement is given to the executive branch. I do think it's important to note that under the Constitution of the state of Georgia, all intergovernmental agreements must be authorized by the governing authority, which is the council.
But in the form of the IGA, there's nothing that contemplates deferring to an outside entity for the enactment of that IGA?
There is no language contained in the IGA itself which states that.
Thank you. You know, I think my position on this legislation has been crystal clear. We're dealing with an emergency situation, and though as a staunch believer in the institution of the Atlanta City Council as an august lawmaking body, and that we should get the information that we asked for, and we should be afforded that respect, but this is an emergency that didn't just happen, you know, this summer or this year. This has been going on with the City of Atlanta literally for the last two years. As I stated at the council meeting, and I guess I should ask this question of the Law Department, we voted unanimously that if the previous administration did not act, the mayor, back in, I think it was May of last year, that we would go ahead and begin, the council would then to go ahead and begin the negotiations to make this arrangement happen. And that was a unanimous vote of the members that were serving at the time. And so has that resolution been repealed? That's what I'd ask the Law Department. To your knowledge, best of your knowledge.
So I, there, to my knowledge, there has been no action directly repealing that resolution, though I would ask that if there are questions concerning what the directions were in that resolution, that I'd be able to pull those to review, and I can answer any further questions later.
The ordinance will obviously override the resolution since it's passed.
Yeah, I would need to review both the resolution as well as the ordinance to make a determination as to whether or not any of the language in the resolution conflicts with the ordinance, and therefore whether or not it has, there could be an argument that the ordinance superseded it.
Well, getting back to my point that, you know, this isn't a new situation where we're unfamiliar with the situation in Fulton County. This has gone on for years where the sheriff has tried, and even before he was sworn in, to try to reach an agreement with the City of Atlanta. Information has been shared, and even if you defer to an outside group, you're still going to end up at the sheriff's office for the information. And while that is being done, and I guess it is important to have that kind of query, you know, if you're curious about it, this is an emergency that has gone on that Sheriff LaBottis tried to address since before coming into office. And so the more that we deliberate, the more that we defer to outside entities outside of our authority, outside of the authorities of our office to do our due diligence, people are suffering. People are literally on the floors. People are being attacked. It is a dangerous situation in Fulton County. And I understand that people say, well, you know, we want to try to define who comes into the jail, who, you know, what type of inmates are over there. But frankly, you know, that's not our purview. That is, falls within the constitutional authority of the sheriff of Fulton County. And so while we have this related debate to the emergency, the emergency persists. People are still on the floor. People have been murdered since we've approved this agreement in the jail, knowing full well that it has already been negotiated and passed. And the delay in moving people, if you care about criminal justice reform, if you care about human beings, you want this to be enacted as quickly as possible. And so, you know, again, you know, I've had situations internally with the city, externally with other groups where I've requested information, and I haven't always gotten it. But people's lives weren't hanging in the balance. And so I've introduced this amendment so that we can repeal this portion, so that we can get on with moving people into our facility, which historically the City of Atlanta has done for decades. You know, this isn't, you know, this is a new IGA, but this isn't a new situation with Atlanta and Fulton County. We have shared and maintained our courts with Fulton County in the past. We have shared and maintained our jail space with Fulton County in the past. And, you know, there's an old saying, you know, when there was a great fire in Rome, that Nero fiddled while Rome burned. We're here talking and debating and asking for statistics that the sheriff has already provided us. And people are suffering. And I think as elected officials, we need to err on the side of the emergency, you know, because the data will be forthcoming. The contract has already been signed. The agreement has already been made that we're going to do this. The more we delay, the more we put people's lives at risk. And they have cable over there at Rice Street. The people who are interned there can see our meetings. They can see this debate. And so when you work in a corrections situation, you want to make sure that the messaging, the situation there on the ground is not only safe for those who are awaiting trial, who are interned in that facility, you want to make sure it's safe for the people that work there. And that's why every time that there's a Super Bowl or the Braves go to the World Series, guess what? Even the most hardened criminals are going to get to watch the game, because you want to make sure that the environment that you're fostering there is a safe one. And so when they watch our meetings on television, they see a body indifferent because of an amendment like this. Though I, you know, I understand what it's like to ask for information and not get it. It's dangerous a mile and a half from here. It's dangerous for people to be interned there. I had a relative that was there that was attacked a year or so ago, about 18 months ago. There are people who, what do we say to the people whose families have lost loved ones because we're asking for a spreadsheet with some information? I think we need to pass this. I think we need to move ahead, and I think we need to act with all deliberate speed to use this facility to help relieve the pressure over at Fulton County, because our hands aren't clean. You know, people who are into this idea of jail reform or criminal justice reform, and say, "We don't need a jail." You can't have a police department without a jail. You can't have a court system, municipal court system, without a jail, because if you're not going to enforce the municipal code, you lose your right under the state constitution. And I think that I'm correct in this, to have a police department. So the idea that, oh, somehow we don't want our jail in use and, you know, all this kind of stuff is nonsense. You know, I'm really frustrated about this because it's personal to me. I've worked in these kinds of dangerous environments. The environment I worked in was more dangerous than Fulton County. The Gateway Center was the jail at the time that I worked in. It was designed for 400 people. There were 1,600 people there on average. And I've stepped over bodies. I've stepped over people. I've found dead bodies. I've seen people attacked. I've been attacked. I had to come to the defense of people. I worked the floor over there on the fourth floor. There was 400 men and me, right? And all I had, you couldn't carry a gun, couldn't carry a stick. All I had was the brass marbles that I brought with me to work, to defend myself, and then defend everybody else in there from everybody else. And so what's going on, and we, our hands are not clean in this, because on any average day, and Mr. Peake could tell us better than anybody, APD contributes to the population of that place, almost, what is it, floating between 60 and 90% on any given day. So for us to say, oh, well, you know, sheriff, you got approved to us, and you're going to bring us the right kind of people, we're stuffing that place with a certain kind of person via our efficient policing in Atlanta. So we got to do something about this. I don't want to see people die needlessly, and waiting on information that the sheriff has already provided us from a third-party group is wasting time. It's taking risks with people's lives, and it is extraordinarily dangerous. And for those who want to cause harm, who create gang activity in jail and criminal activity and bullying in jail, they love this, because they know help is not coming. They know the cavalry is on pause because people are fiddling while Rome is burning. So I would urge that we would do, move approval and move this forward to the full body.
I'm going to defer to committee members first. Councilmember Dozier, Councilmember Waits, you're next.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. In August of 2022, both the City of Atlanta and Fulton County agreed and approved an intergovernmental agreement. Both the City of Atlanta and Fulton County agreed to require a statistical jail population review study to be conducted by the Justice Policy Board within 90 days to provide insight as to how to most efficiently and safely resolve the urgent humanitarian crisis of overcrowding at the jail. So to use the word "a spreadsheet," I find offensive. And secondly, to use the word "indifferent," I think is reckless and irresponsible. 30 million people on an average are over at the detention center. So to spend millions of dollars to house them is reckless and irresponsible. This is a 16-member legislative body that's been elected by, I believe, about 600,000 people in the City of Atlanta to make decisions as to what is in the best interest of the city. So even though the mayor may have that responsibility, he also has a council that governs with him. This is also the same mayor that in his capacity of post-three at large, that actually agreed with us and said, "We need to turn this facility into an equity and wellness center to do the very thing that we intend to do." But nonetheless, I won't get into that and delay this process. So the notion somehow that we are curious, I also think that term is disrespectful and offensive, and frankly, this is within our purview, given that, as you stated, most of the individuals who are in that facility are actually Atlanta-sent housed inmates. So this body agreed several weeks ago to create a jail population review study. We have not delayed that process. In fact, if we had it, we wouldn't be having this conversation today, because we don't have that information to make the best informed decisions. Now, I have no doubt that this will pass, this particular body today, which is fine. But I just want the residents of the City of Atlanta to know that this is not a spreadsheet that we're asking for, nor are we indifferent. We want to set good policy and make the best decisions for the individuals who are housed over in that facility. And secondly, we have already talked about the fact that many of the individuals that are there are actually eligible for pad services. The citizens of Atlanta need to know that many of the individuals who are housing at the facility are mentally incompetent and not capable of going to court, which they should be somewhere that could provide the treatment that they need. Others are awaiting drug and alcohol treatment facilities, but because we don't have an equity center, we have nowhere to send those individuals. And lastly, to send the women of Union City to that facility first does not get anyone off the floor. In fact, that makes no logical sense to me. So, given that the former mayor, excuse me, the mayor, existing mayor, who was formerly a member of this body authored and proposed the legislation to create a wellness and equity center, I just would like to remind you that this agree, again, was agreed upon with this legislative body, just like in August of 2022, we agreed to a jail population review study to assist us in making the best possible decisions. So for that reason, I will be voting no to your amendment, because we have already set forth a path that I think is in our best interest to protect those individuals, well, at least that we say we want to protect them. Because if we were really going to protect them, we will create an equity center to provide them with the resources and wraparound services that they really need. So we agree on many, many things. This is just one of those areas that we respectfully disagree.
Councilmember Norwood.
Yes, I just want to give a little history. I served on the city's Repeat Offender Commission, and during that time, back when I was here before, I understood directly from judges that they were making decisions releasing people and not holding them in jail because of overcrowding. End of story. Secondly, we know that Fulton County has been fined. We know that there are, that there was the, the state, the government said, "You've got to release people, and/or you will be fined." And we are playing with fire. We know that we have more people there than we ought to have. We know the conditions are not humane. And my colleagues and I visited both Rice Street and ACDC. I know the difference in the way that it is set up. I know how much better an environment of ACDC is. And as, to pertain to the Union City women, there are two reasons that they are being transferred. One is, is that they come with staff. So staff comes over with them to go ahead and get ACDC staffed up. The second is the conditions there. And I cannot speak to it personally because I have not toured that facility, but I have heard about it by reputation for several, several years. So I am going to support this. We are, we are going to get the information, but I believe that knowing what this sheriff did when he ran the Corrections Department of the city, and I saw how he treated people in an environment that was safer and better for them, I respect his judgment. I supported him to be sheriff, and I support us treating everyone in the best possible manner. And that is, let's get Union City over there. Let's get it staffed up. He can then rehab Union City and have people get out of Rice Street. He can then rehab Union City and have people get out of Rice Street. Who should get out? And I don't want to be one of the council members that we say in 90 days, "Oh, my goodness, who are all these people out on the street? What is going on?" And we go, "Well, we had to let them out. Had to let them out." And the judges will do that. They have told me they do that. They will not say it publicly, but I heard from several when I served on the Repeat Offender Commission. I think it is important for us to move quickly in this important public safety initiative.
Councilmember Overstreet.
Thank you, Chair Hillis. I just want to, I'll be brief. I just want to weigh in, because everyone keeps saying that we all agreed that, you know, the IGA should be held up by the, this particular, the paper. And we didn't agree. We were split. And I was one of the ones that said no. While I do agree that that information is important to us, and I really do, I think that, you know, we should absolutely have that information. I don't agree that we should not start our agreement with Fulton County immediately while we get that paper. So we were not unanimous in sending this particular legislation forward. We were not. So, you know, to say that we all know and we all agreed is just not true. We were just outnumbered by one. So, you know, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Overstreet, a second by Councilmember Norwood. First, before we go back to you, Councilmember Waits, I want to recognize Councilmember Dozier again, and also recognize I've been joining the audience by Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to close with you all to say that we are on day 60 of a 90-day mandate. And had we gotten the information that we requested two months ago, we'd be done. It could have been done in a week. We wouldn't be having this debate right now. And so I respect Councilmember Bond, I respect your personal experience in dealing with this and dealing with the corrections system. I too am not a stranger to violence. I know how traumatic it is for yourself and for families, and I get it. And I understand what the folks at Rice Street are going through. I understand what their families are going through, because I've been there. I just want to reiterate that I think it's important for our partners at Fulton County to have that same urgency. If they would have shared this information with us at the time in which we voted on the IGA as amended, if they had shared this information with us at the time in which we asked for it before we came to a vote, we would not be here today. And this, so this is one to say that we are debating something that could have been addressed months ago. We are day 60 of a 90-day mandate for the Justice Policy Board. And so, you know, Fulton County, which is our partner, are, they're in the driver's seat. If they get this information, if they push this information forward, let the board do the work that it was mandated to do, we would all be able to move forward together. That's all I ask, is that let's center ourselves on transparency, you know, making a decision based on the data that we should have gotten a long time ago.
Thank you. Councilmember Dozier, Councilmember Waits.
To Councilmember Overstreet's point, I just simply want to go on record and indicate that there were a number of us who did not support moving forward with the intergovernmental agreement at all. In fact, we had different reasons, given that it's our belief that the facility should in fact be used for other purposes. And so I just wanted to be very clear that even though the overwhelming majority of the body agreed to support, that there were others of us who felt that we should go in a different direction with respect to criminal justice reform and the use of that intended building. And so, again, thank you.
Councilmember Bond.
Well, just to respond to my colleague, you know, I empathize with you in not having gotten the information, but the issue I have is that this is an emergency. And, you know, lives actually have been lost, right? I mean, people have actually been killed because this has been delayed. And I don't know what it takes, or how many times I can call it an emergency, but it's, when you're in an emergency, you act now, right? I mean, you were in the military. I mean, you all didn't defer when there was, when it was time to take action to a third-party group to say, "Should we advance or not? Or should we delay our advance to get our advice from somebody else when you're on the field?" You know, we're, from my perspective, you know, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but from my perspective, we're playing with people's lives. I've, I've worked in law enforcement, I've worked in these environments, and it is exceedingly dangerous for the people who go to work there every day. And I know, I get it, you know, you requested information, you should have gotten the information. But even at that point, when you were requesting the information, it was still an emergency. It was still dangerous. You know, it's dangerous right now. You know, it's, you know, police officer is an extremely dangerous job, but when I was doing corrections in the early 90s, correction was considered the most dangerous public safety job there was. Because there's no other more dangerous, quote-unquote, animal than a human being. Right? And most of the time, correction officers are, they're outnumbered, they can't carry weapons, and they're in an environment where they're hugely outnumbered, and they have to protect everybody from each other in that facility. Care, custody, and control. And you can't maintain care, custody, and control in a dangerous environment, particularly, like I said, everything, you know, the people who are in the facility are not cut off from the outside world. So the more that we delay, if there are gangs, and there are gangs in the jail, they watch the news, just like the gangs watch the news who are out, you know, to find out what the police are doing, and where the police are going to be. It's the same thing in the jail. So every moment that we delay, it becomes more dangerous for the people who are there by no fault of their own, perhaps, who are waiting on their court date, who are becoming victims of that culture in there, because they're exceedingly outnumbered. And so, yeah, it's important to get the information. And, you know, I didn't mean to belittle the information when I called it a spreadsheet, but it's still just information. And the IGA specifically talks about who will be in our facility. And I asked the Law Department specifically about what the sheriff was responsible for, what we're responsible for. So anything beyond what's in the IGA is irrelevant to what we should be concerned about going on at the pretrial detention center, because that's the only thing that we're contracted about. So whoever else is in the Fulton County jail, they're there for a constitutional-based reason. And I also want to point out, if you're currently, and the sheriff has stated this, if, you know, if you're currently in jail, you're in, you're not eligible for PAD programs, because you're already arrested. You're already, these are people who are already, you know, who have been arrested and processed. So, you know, to continue to put that out there, that, I mean, that's not accurate, because you're, you're not eligible for PAD if you're interned. So you've got, the sheriff shared with us, days after our vote, the information that this committee is going to give us. So we are, we actually already have the information. So, you know, somebody got stabbed and killed, you know, within the last two weeks. You know, this, you know, we're playing with, I mean, I don't get it. It's an emergency, and we're in, you're right, we're elected to represent the city. We're elected to represent people. The people outside know it's an emergency. The people who we, who voted for us know that it's dangerous. And they also know that we put in, there was an amendment voted on, it was, it was a split vote broken by the president, that deferred this in the face of that emergency, and in the face of that murder, in the face of those attacks that have gone on, in the face of the pleas of the sheriff to ask us, to beg us, to do something about it. And he's got a signed agreement, and he can't begin his process to begin to relieve the pressure to make it safer for people. And there are women on the floor down at Union City. So there are people down there on the floor, right now. And so I don't know how to make people respond to this emergency situation, other than to, you know, to continue to make the plea that we act. You know, we're going to get the information, it's public record, you know, if we wanted it that badly, all we could do is put in a, if they couldn't get it from, if you're asking the commissioners for it, that was the wrong place, they need to ask the sheriff. Because they're not, they're not a unified, they're not a unified government. And so, you know, the information is there, the sheriff has provided it, and, you know, I mean, it, you know, I have post-traumatic stress from working over there. Right? It was like going to Vietnam for eight hours every day, but I got to go home, sleep, and then come back to it. So, you know, it has scarred me. And so when I see people that, you know, they make, they put this pretense up, that it, you know, it's about this great cause to decriminalize or something else, I mean, no, it's just straight up dangerous, and people are getting hurt, and people have already been killed. And so, I mean, that, in my mind, from my perspective, ought to be enough to want to damn well do something about it. And so, you know, waiting 30 days, I mean, I mean, I don't know how you do that. You know, I mean, I don't get it. I mean, I just figure, you know, you really don't know what the situation is, or it really hadn't sunk in, that, you know, we as responsible elected people have to coordinate, you know, 90% of Atlanta's in Fulton County, that we ought to be working with them jointly to fix this as fast as possible. I mean, so, you know, I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, you know, I mean, somebody died, you know? They got killed since we approved this. You know? I mean, we need to be about the business of ameliorating the problem, not, not waiting on a report from whomever, you know? I mean, we need to act, I mean, that Justice Policy Board, they're not elected, right? We're elected. Right? And we represent all of Atlanta that's in Fulton County. A third of, you know, a third of Fulton County is Atlanta. 60%, 70% of taxes that make Fulton County work, it comes from us. You know what I'm saying? We contribute to the population of the jail. Right? I mean, we should be fixing this, you know, not just saying, "Well, I asked for information, they're going to give it to me, they're going to do this, they're going to do that." Well, somebody got stabbed two weeks ago. I don't know what everybody else is made of, but I'm not made like that. I think we need to be fixing it. Maynard Jackson, Michael Lomax, when they were faced with this, they fixed it. Right? And it worked for decades. We should be about doing the same thing. You know? I'm sorry I'm so passionate, but, you know, I've, you know, I've been there, I feel what these deputies are going through. You know? I got no knuckles no more. You know what I'm saying? Broke my hand twice, you know? Defending people, helping, you know, getting folks off of folks. You know, it's bad. I mean, I don't know what it takes to make people know that this is bad. You know? I mean, principle is one thing, and principle has its place, but we need to do something about this now. Now. You know, I don't know. I, you know, I've talked enough.
I want to defer to Councilmember Bakhtiari, who hasn't spoken yet, who has joined us. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you, Chairman Hillis. First, I want to say thank you to a couple of the members of the committee, because, for example, I know that Councilmember Boone and Councilmember Overstreet, we've talked about this at length. I know your districts want something different than mine. And I get that, because I completely understand. And I want to say that my district, the people that voted me to be in office, have asked me to advocate against this. So I'm representing them. So let's just state that for the record. And Councilmember Norwood, I know you and I have talked at length about this, and you have been wonderful in trying to assist me with helping try to find an alternative diversion center, medical, all of that, and I appreciate that. Councilmember Waits, you know all the things I want to thank, say thank you to you for. So that, this is a complex issue, that I understand. I want to also state that people have been being killed in this facility for years, so this is not new, and it didn't just happen, it hasn't accelerated because we've deferred. So let's also not make it seem like this is the reason that people are dying in Rice Street. That's a bit disingenuous. In addition to that, I agree that there is an overpopulation problem at the jail, and I know that Rice Street is in poor condition, we know that. There's been lawsuits since it's been opened, we are all aware of that. It's in terrible condition. I agree, there shouldn't be people on the floor. What I disagree about is that the solving, the solution to mass incarceration and overpopulation is the short-term response of more incarcerated space to lock up more black bodies. Incorrect, sir. I believe that, yes, I understand the temporary need to relocate people out of Rice Street. True. I get that. However, the reason it is our job as city council members, and it is not irresponsible for me to ask for more data, that's actually called responsibility, it's the very addition of, very definition of responsibility, because we need to know why people are being locked up. How can we do our jobs if we don't know root causes of mass incarceration, so that we can disrupt systemic issues, and especially systemic racism? I know the lease has happened, it's going to happen, we know this. All that we are asking is for the data to understand who is being locked up, not because it's the sole fault of the sheriff, which, by the way, Sheriff Lebat and I are going to get dinner and talk about all this, because that's my job too, is to talk to everyone on every side. But it's also my job to represent my community, and to represent the alternative belief, and it is incredibly dangerous, and quite frankly, gaslighting, to claim that the only way to solve this issue is through, is increasing mass incarceration and saying that we are the irresponsible ones for not moving through, when we're talking about, you've spoken enough, when we're talking about saving people's lives, disrupting systemic forms of racism, stopping perpetual trauma, and ensuring that we're protecting everybody in this community, and everybody in the city. I get that we have to move people to ACDC. I understand that. I understand it. All I'm asking for is the data, so that we can go above and beyond and find out why people are being locked up, how we can prevent this from further being an issue, why we're overpopulated, because I know not everybody in there is a murderer, I know not everybody in there is a rapist, I know not everyone in there is a serial killer. And so I want data, by APF's own data, about 300 people in the City of Atlanta are responsible for about 49% of the crime. I don't believe thousands more are responsible for the rest of it. And I want our officers to succeed. We have an incredible chief, we have an incredible deputy chief. I get all of that. I'm asking for a diversity of tact, because the only way to solve this issue is not just by adding additional incarcerated space. There's other ways to solve this issue, and it's by looking at all causes, and that's why we need data. Data will solve things. Data shows us the root causes. Data allows us to disrupt systemic racism. I don't know how many more times I have to say that. This isn't because, not saying all this because I don't, I don't respect the sheriff, I do. Him and I are both passionate and hot-headed, so we get into it, but at the end of the day, we're going to grab dinner, and we're going to talk it out, because that's our jobs. But I will not sit here and allow anyone to tell me that the reason that I am doing this is because I am irresponsible. I'm doing this because I have been locked up in that jail, because I have known people that have been locked up in that jail, because I've been doing indirect services, just like certain people here have been doing correctional office work. I've been on the other side of it, in extreme poverty, homelessness, sexual assault, the list goes on. So I know what leads people to end up in that jail. And I know there are preventable reasons. Shouldn't be overpopulated, I agree. But maybe we can be doing a better job of understanding why people are locked in, up in there, so that we can do things like, I don't know, invest more in child education, after-school planning, combating food deserts, providing more housing, to prevent people from having to resort to crime. So it's just as much our fault. And that's why I'm up here talking, and that is our job, is to represent everybody, not condemn them. And while I do appreciate correction officers, their jobs would be easier if we found ways to do more efficient work and to streamline efficiencies, and to provide more support. And we do that again through data. And it shouldn't be hard to provide. And also, to the chairman, I appreciate him putting out his press release, but for the reminder and for the record, let us also remember that the chairman was somebody who voted against this lease. So while I appreciate him talking about Rome is burning, let's also remember the fact that that same individual who put out that press release and said, "Give us the keys to the jail," was the very same person who to the jail," was the very same person who voted against it. So it's kind of, it's a bit of a two-sided situation, isn't it? So practice what you preach. Thank you.
And just to clarify, you're speaking about the chairman of the Fulton County Commission.
Not Chairman Hillis, Chairman of the Fulton County Commission.
I'll first go to Councilmember Waits.
All right, sir, I'm not going to delay this vote.
And we'll also remind everyone, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, so.
Okay, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Yes, sir. For the record, I also wanted to just echo the fact that individuals were sent to Cobb County and Union City to relieve overcrowding. And here we again are at the same conversation where we're talking about relieving overcrowding. And lastly, contraband, to my understanding, comes in externally, meaning this was brought in by the staff and individuals or some other external force. They didn't just get all of these weapons of contraband, it didn't, you know, just materialize out of the air. And so I don't believe going to a new facility will address some of the contraband that is being brought in. And lastly, we were told that the sheriff has provided the information that has been requested, and it is my understanding that this information is incomplete. And so I would submit to this body that we actually have a leadership crisis. I don't believe we have a humanitarian issue, but instead a leadership crisis. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to ask members of the body, you know, this isn't personal, and I have been personally attacked a couple of times by a colleague, and people, Mr. Chair, should address their comments to the chair and have that debate. And I appreciate, and I want to extend this invitation to Ms. Bakhtiari, since she's talked to so many people around the issue, that I'm available for you to talk to as well, if you'd like. And we can, we sit down and have that debate, because I wasn't just on the corrections side. I've worked in the nonprofit space in the same avenues that you have before, you know, you were in those careers. So I have seen both sides of the issue. I know people who have been incarcerated most of their lives, who are close friends of mine, in the Fulton County Jail. And I just want to say that, well, first, I want to ask the Law Department a question. Who has responsibility for, is the responsibility for human services contained in our charter? Or is it the Fulton County Government that has the responsibility of those services?
The responsibility for human services is not a responsibility that is given to the city of Atlanta pursuant to the city's charter, though of course, the city has traditionally provided certain human services functions to the population. However, that is a county function by designation from the state.
Okay. And so with that being clear, I'd like, as a former activist myself, one who has been jailed for his own convictions, in a, not just in the city jail, but a real northern jail protesting, I think that some of the activists, if I could make a humble suggestion, Fulton County is now completely municipalized. So they had a tremendous windfall in reserves in their budget that they can use for human services. So I would just make that suggestion to you, to pursue those dollars for these types of programs. And, you know, the fault of why a person or persons ends up in a correctional facility is multifaceted, and is not solved by data alone. There are environmental factors, there are emotional factors, there are mental factors, there are racial factors. And one should not think or come to the conclusion that because I advocate for an urgent and direct response, that I am ignorant of those solutions and potentialities in solving the criminal justice problem. One of the biggest things in resolving this issue is not to delay in it, is not to put it off, but to attack it first right. Over the last 20 years, Fulton County and Atlanta have done, well, Fulton County itself did two major studies on how best that we could combine and streamline our criminal justice systems, how we can put in place procedures and opportunities to keep people out of the criminal justice system as much as possible. And they're collected, it was done in the early 2000s, but the wheel was lost to implement those. And so there are savings that can be done, that can divert those funds back into the type of programs that might keep people out of a correctional facility. And I'm willing to have that discussion with anyone and to sit down and to be a part of those discussions. Because I have family members who are in the criminal justice system, who have, through no fault of their, well, I wouldn't say no fault of their own, but they wound up there, and some are still there. But the solution today is that we have an IGA that did not contemplate this delay, that was not negotiated between the mayor and the sheriff, that we would defer for 90 days. And within that 90-day period of deferment, it has delayed the sheriffs being able to occupy this building. And in doing so, the situation at Fulton County, which, yes, it did not start yesterday, it has gone on for a long time, but because it's gone on for a long time, doesn't mean it should continue to go on for a long time, that people who are there should continue to have to exist under dangerous conditions when we who have the power can do something about it. I withdraw.
Councilmember Norwood.
Call the question.
Second. That's not an appropriate motion in committee.
Ms.?
Councilmember Waits.
Thank you. The statement, again, was made that there was a 90-day delay and that information. The reason for that is, is that we requested that information to make the best educated possible decision. And so I just wanted to be very clear that this was not a 90-day delay for no reason. It was a very specific reason given, and it was voted up by the majority of this body. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments? Yeah, she is the, she's the secondor. So we have a motion by Councilmember Waits and a second by Councilmember Norwood, but we will wait until she returns, since she's not. Okay, I wrote that down wrong, I apologize. Motion is by Councilmember Overstreet, and the secondor is Councilmember Norwood. But we'll wait till she returns, so she is technically present for the vote. Go ahead, Councilmember Bond.
Thank you. Just want to make the point that it may not have been intended to be a delay, but it is a delay, because the IGA can't be executed until that process is finished. So it may not have been intended to be, you know, to be put off, but the result of it is that it is put off, so.
Am I recognized, Mr. Chair?
More.
Thank you. Mr. Bond, I share your passion today. But again, that information was asked for, for a very specific reason. There's a group of us that believe, in fact, that if we utilize this data, we could actually serve and help more families. More than likely, 25% of the people that are probably housed in that facility would not be there if we gave them the appropriate services that they need. And so for that reason, we're asking for that data.
No, I don't question the reason why you asked for it, but the amendment, the effect of the amendment, that it would not go into effect until you got it, right? That delays the agreement.
And I think the fact that we haven't received that information.
We're not going to have a back and forth.
Sir, you respectfully allowed him to respond to me, so I'd like to respond to him.
Neither of you apparently recognize.
Well, we can go and talk about this later.
So if you'd like to speak, you can hit your speaker button.
Okay. He did not hit his speaker button when he spoke.
I'm talking to both of you. If you want to speak further, hit your speaker button.
No, I don't need to speak further, but whatever decorum you're going to have for the group, let's have it for the whole body.
All right, we are back to the motion by Councilmember Overstreet and the second by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Vote is favorable, five yays, one nay, one abstention.
Thank you all.
And Councilmember Dozier. We'll move on to item number three, 22R4420.
Mr. Chair, I want to say thank you for letting us speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos to request that Atlanta Department of Transportation replace and install neighborhood permit parking signs authorized pursuant to ordinance 2100679 for the Vine City Stadium area permit parking program, to request the Atlanta Department of Transportation issue required parking permits to encourage Atlanta parking enforcement in the Vine City Stadium area and for other purposes.
Chairman Amos.
Most approve.
Second. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Seven yays, Mr. Chair, zero nays.
Zero nays, that item is favorable. Moving on to item four, 22R4498.
A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to exercise the first renewal option for CP-S-1220051 E911 network system administration services with Mission Critical Partners LLC on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department for a term of one year, effective from February 2nd, 2023 through February 1st, 2024, in an amount not to exceed $204,960.0. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein.
Chief Peake, you speak to this. Does this have anything to do with the new phone system that's being implemented at 911?
It is part of the E911 upgrade to get the systems up as we continue to upgrade that system for the CAD and all the other amenities that we're trying to do that will ultimately be able to help us really and truly focus on some of the numbers from the data that you're actually requesting as well, so, yes, sir.
When will that be live?
I don't have the actual date for when it will go live, but this, it was a phase of services that they were trying to upgrade, so this was one of the ones that they needed to move forward to continue with the upgrades.
If you could give us a thorough update on the 911 upgrades at the.
Part of the presentation.
At the quarterly next cycle.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bond. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Seven yays, zero nays, that item is favorable. We can take items five and six as a block, as their settlement.
22R4499, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant city of Atlanta in the case of Robert Kenmore versus city of Atlanta, civil action file number 2020CV335636, pending in the Superior Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $275,000.0, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes. 22R4500, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the city of Atlanta in the case of Jessica Slaton individually and as parent and natural guardian of JS, a minor child, versus city of Atlanta, civil action file number 20EV004884, Fulton County State Court, in the amount of $20,000.0, authorizing said amount to be paid from the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the total settlement amount and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Seven yays, zero nays, those two items are favorable. Item number seven, that from held, 2201099.
An ordinance by Councilmembers Liliana Bakhtiari, Matt Westmoreland, Dustin R. Hillis, Amir R. Faroki, Jason H. Winston, Jason Dozier, Byron D. Amos, Marcy Collier Overstreet, Michael Julian Bond, and Andrea L. Boone, as amended by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Chapter 150, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 2, Section 150-1, to add definitions for electric vehicles and plug-in hybrid electric vehicles in Chapter 150, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 2, to add a new Section 150-30, enforcement of electric vehicle parking and for other purposes.
I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Seven yays, zero nays, that item is favorable. And next item to remove from held is actually item number 18, at Councilmember Westmoreland's request, 2201748. If you could read that in.
An ordinance by Councilmembers Jason Winston and Matt Westmoreland to amend the city of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, which prohibits discrimination throughout the city, to include persons directly impacted by the criminal legal system in the class of persons who may be aggrieved by alleged discrimination or unlawful practices under the Human Relations Code, in order to combat the long-term impacts of incarceration and for other purposes.
Councilmember Westmoreland, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No comments, colleagues, I'd ask for your favorable consideration, and I believe Councilmember Boone and perhaps some others had asked that their names be added to this legislation before a vote, so I will yield to you all and thank you for your consideration.
I make a motion to amend, to add Councilmember Boone, Councilmember Amos, Councilmember Bond, Councilmember Waits, Councilmember Overstreet to the legislation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote on that amendment.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six yays, zero nays, one abstention, it's favorable. Now moving on to the legislation, as amended, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six yays, zero nays, one abstention, that item is favorable, as amended.
Thank you, colleagues, for your vote in helping ensure that some of our most vulnerable residents can reenter the workforce and be productive citizens of society.
Thank you, Councilmember Westmoreland, and also Councilmember Winston for their work on this. I just wanted to clarify on the previous item. Councilmember Amos, did you want to pull this, or was that mismarked? Item number 17, about the AC, or Atlanta Citizen Review Board. I think it may have been mismarked when Councilmember Westmoreland communicated he wanted to remove 18 from held. I'm just mentioning, you didn't request that be moved, right?
No, I didn't.
Okay. All right, so we'll leave item number 17 as held. We will now take up a walk-in, Alm's ID 31153.
Mr. Chair, item number 17 has to be voted on in full county.
Mr. Chair, item number 17 has to be voted on in full counsel twice in 60 days. Therefore, it should be moved off of held today.
With pleasure, Councilmember Amos.
Let's pull it off held.
Okay. I'll make a motion to remove from held, or motion to approve. Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Seven yays, zero nays. Item is favorable. So we'll move on to full counsel and then come back, as it says, a charter amendment. Correct?
Please repeat the question, Mr. Chair.
This is a charter amendment, so we'll go to full counsel and then come back.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Just one second, please.
Okay.
from law to weigh in, and then we can go from there.
Yes, and, excuse me, and my apologies regarding this. 2201099 has certain legal issues with it. It, as stated, as currently as it appears, it creates certain civil offenses for parking vehicles on private property. The city, the Department of Law has concerns whether or not the city can create such a civil offense. Whilst, of course, we can regulate parking in our own right-of-way, to regulate parking in this manner, we believe to be problematic, or at least potentially problematic, and would ask that we be given time to review this ordinance further before moving forward, or that we be given an opportunity to provide further analysis concerning this ordinance prior to full counsel.
Okay. So if it's the pleasure of the body, we can take a motion to reconsider this, and either continue to have it held or move it forward without recommendation. So I'll, I'll first make a motion to reconsider, and we can go back there. Second by Councilmember Amos.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Seven yays, zero nays. Item is back before us. With the pleasure of the body, will we continue to hold this to get more clarity from law? Ms. Robinson, what do you, do you need, do you have an answer to us by Monday, or do you want additional time, perhaps take this up next cycle? What's the?
And, well, it would be law's preference that this not move forward, due to the concerns that we have previously expressed to the sponsor or the original sponsor of this legislation. Of course, we can provide that further information to yourself and this committee, but we would recommend that it not move forward what's, at this time.
Well, if you could just get us a review back to all of the committee members by our next committee meeting, that would be appreciated. So with that information, I'll make a motion to hold. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Seven yays, zero nays. That item is held. We, take up the walk-in legislation, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Items 31153. Read that in.
A resolution to amend Resolution Number 22R3056, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on February 7, 2022, and approved per city charter section 2-403 on February 16, 2022, which expanded the purpose and membership of the Public Safety Commission established pursuant to Resolution Number 21R3441, in order to modify the current membership and reduce the quorum requirements and for other purposes.
Councilmember Waits, I believe this is your paper. Let's weigh in.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to give some clarity as to what we're doing. So we've had two successful meetings, and in those meetings, we've had to have a 100% participation to ensure we met our quorum. What this simply does is it removes those appointments to which no one submitted a name. And the second thing is that it would change the sunset date to 24 months. This paper actually was originally authored by Councilwoman Shepherd, and the original legislation had 24 months, and we reduced it because oftentimes, many don't want to serve for an extended period of time given their busy lives. However, given the challenges with the quorum piece, it took us nearly six months to get everyone officially appointed and through the process. And so essentially, this body would be over based upon the existing language. And so we want to put it back to 24 months, which would give us another six months to work and get recommendations to this body. Thank you, sir.
What is your pleasure?
I'd like to move approval.
All right.
That doesn't happen often in this body, so I was very excited.
Motion by Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, sir.
Second by Councilmember Overstreet.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Seven yays, zero nays. That item is favorable. That, I believe, our legislative agenda is completed.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I need to sound item 17, 2201745.
Go ahead.
An ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos to amend the Charter of the city of Atlanta, Georgia, 1996, Georgia laws, adopted under and by virtue of the authority of the Municipal Home Rule Act of 1965, OCGA Section 36-35-1, as amended by amending Part 1, Subpart A, Appendix 4, Conflict of Interest, to amend the Atlanta Citizens Review Board membership compensation and for other purposes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that. We did not read that in, but we did make a motion to send that back, or send that to full counsel, and it will come back to this body as it is a charter amendment. So we will take that up next cycle as well. So again, that completes our legislative agenda. Any questions, comments, well wishes from members of the committee?
I'll tell you why.
All right. We are adjourned.